Good evening, welcome to the October 25th, 2021 Troy City Council Meeting. Please rise for the invocation where Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga will do it and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this city, the city of Troy. We thank you for the honor to either have been born here, to have come here, to have chosen here. Thank you for all that it is and all that it will be, Lord Jesus. Bless our conversation, our discussion, our decisions tonight, Lord God. May be present in all of them, in your son's name, Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. The October 25th, 2021 Troy City Council Meeting is now officially called to order. Let us ask for the roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Protem Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Here.
Councilmember Eric Sangal.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
All present this evening. First up, our certificates of recognition and special presentations this evening. We have two. See one as a proclamation to celebrate Filipino-American Heritage Month, October 2021. I would like to have Willie DeChavez come forward and meet me at the podium. I'd like to present that. I'd like to present this proclamation to celebrate Filipino-American Heritage Month, October 2021. I'm going to read it into the record. Whereas the heritage of the Filipino people enriches our own culture and we welcome the history, culture, and contributions of the Filipino-American community to our city, state, and to the nation. The Filipino-American community continues to accomplish its goal to foster understanding through the development, promotion, and preservation of Philippine values, culture, and tradition. These citizens have truly made a difference, and their professional and civic involvement will continue to enrich our communities far into the future. And whereas it is our hope that the month of October will bring awareness and admiration to a proud group of our citizens, and through the awareness and contributions between the United States and Philippines, as we hope to foster a friendship that will stand the test of time. And whereas we also give special recognition to United States, Pinoy's For Good Governance, USP4GG, Michigan for the many events and activities related to celebrating Filipino-American Heritage Month each October. USP4GG is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that represents the advocacy work of Filipino-American leaders. And whereas during this month, Michigan's Filipino-American community will celebrate Filipino Heritage Month through a series of special events featuring their history, food, dance, and art, celebrating the rich tradition and many contributions the Filipino community has made to our community and beyond. And whereas we appreciate and honor the countless achievements of Filipino-Americans and continue our efforts to ensure our community is a welcoming and inclusive place that provides just and equal opportunities for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Filipino-American Heritage Month, and be it further resolved that we invite all Troy residents to recognize and celebrate the vital role our Filipino population has played in our nation's history, as well as their outstanding achievements today and into the future. We applaud our own Troy residents and business owners and celebrate their contributions to our community and beyond. This is presented this 25th day of October 2021. It's signed by myself as the mayor, all members of city council. Willie, I'm going to present it to you on behalf of the city, and I thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and the members of the city council. And on behalf of the 30,000-plus Filipino-Americans in Michigan, I will receive this proclamation in their behalf. Thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
All right, next up is C2. It's a proclamation to recognize Hindu Heritage Month and also the celebration of Diwali, the Festival of Lights, which is November 4th, 2021. Joining me at the podium will be Nasi Sangagiri from the Baratia Temple. Please. Again, I'm going to read this into the record. This is a proclamation to recognize Hindu Heritage Month and the celebration of Diwali, the Festival of Lights, November 4th, 2021. Whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, Troy is a city with the second-largest percentage of foreign-born residents in Metro Detroit. The city of Troy is proud of our many immigrants who call this community home and appreciate their valuable contributions in building and enriching our nation. And whereas the city of Troy takes pride in celebrating significant milestones and events of historical importance, therefore during the month of October, we join with our Hindu neighbors to come together and celebrate their rich culture and diverse spiritual traditions. And whereas Hinduism is the third-largest religion in the world, with 1 billion devotees worldwide and approximately 6 million in the United States, the Hindu heritage, culture, traditions, and values provide their followers invaluable solutions to many of life's problems and serve as a source of inspiration, reflection, and contemplation for the millions of individuals who look to the teaching of Hinduism for guidance. And whereas Diwali, the Festival of Lights, symbolizes the victory of Dharma and good over evil, and is one of the most celebrated festivals of Hindus, Sikhs, and Jains. And whereas Asian Indian immigrants are the largest ethnic group of immigrants in this area with close to 5,000 living here in Troy, Troy is also home to one of the oldest and largest Hindu temples in Michigan, the Baratia Temple of Metro Detroit. And whereas more than 1 billion celebrants worldwide reverently observe the holy day of Diwali to mark the beginning of the Hindu New Year, the U.S. Congress and House of Representatives officially passed unanimous resolutions since 2007 recognizing the religious and historical significance of Diwali. And whereas Diwali is a time for dana, charitable giving, and seva, selfless service, by bringing light in the form of wisdom, knowledge, nourishment, and shelter in order to alleviate the tangible forms of suffering such as hunger, disease, and poverty. The shared Indian holiday of Diwali signifies a special time of peace and serenity with the hope of building bridges of understanding and tearing down barriers of intolerance. And whereas our vibrant Hindu-American community has contributed tremendously to the city of Troy, the state of Michigan, and across our nation by enriching the lives of our citizens, during the month of October, the Hindu-American community will collectively celebrate its heritage by focusing on its culture and the diverse spiritual traditions rooted in India. Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby proclaims the month of October 2021 as Hindu Heritage Month and invite Troy residents to recognize and celebrate the vital role our Hindu population has played in our nation's history, as well as their outstanding achievements today and into the future. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council recognizes the religious and historical significance of Diwali, the Festival of Lights, and Diwali's message of tolerance, compassion, and the victory of good over evil which resonates with the American spirit. And be it further resolved that the city of Troy proudly expresses its deepest respect for Indian-Americans and South Asian-Americans throughout the world and here in the Troy community, and all those who celebrate the Festival of Diwali on November 4th, 2021. Troy City Hall will be lit up in honor of the Festival of Lights on November 4th, 2021. This proclamation is presented this 25th day of October 2021, and again signed by myself as mayor and all members of city council, so I'll give it to you. Thank you very much. Can I say a quick word on behalf of the temple? Thank you.
I couldn't have put it better myself. It is such a beautiful proclamation. Thank you, Mayor Baker. Thanks to all the council members and the staff of City Hall. Thank you so much. I receive this with honor and pride on behalf of the Baratia Temple and all my Hindu brothers and sisters here. Thank you.
That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. I'd like to make a resolution to waive Rule 5B, Regular Meeting Order of Business of the Council Rules of Procedure. Resolve the Troy City Council hereby waives Rules 5B, Regular Meeting Order of Business of the Council Rules of Procedure, to move Agenda Item I-5, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Recommendation for Naming of a Park Located on Town Center Adjacent to the Community Center, to be considered next on the agenda.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Abraham, that we approve this resolution to waive Rule 5B as read into the record. Any discussion? Make the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Motion carries. That means we'll do I-5, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Recommendation for Naming of the Park Located on Town Center Adjacent to the Community Center, and that'll be introduced by Kurt Bovinsief, our Public Works Director. Hi Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What an honor. Most directors don't get to come to council with the naming of a park, and I've had an opportunity to, this is my second one in the last five years, so this is a great opportunity. Brief history on the policy for naming parks. In 2016, council did amend the policy that we follow to name new parks, and included in that was to allow a park to be named after a living individual with significant contributions to the community. On June 10th, 2021, I think all of council was there on the groundbreaking of that exciting new park on Town Center, which was the old Troy High School parking lot. It was a dilapidated parking lot, and it needed to be rejuvenated into something useful for the community. And we worked towards completion. We're about 90% completed. We've got some grass to grow in there and some electrical to do, but that will be fully operational by spring, so exciting news there. During the process, we recognized quickly that we need to name this spot, and so we opened that up to the public from August 4th, 2021 through September 1st, 2021, for the community to provide naming suggestions, which would be ultimately reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. On September 16th, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, with members here tonight, Pam and Mike Brady, reviewed that list of names, which is included in the agenda packet. And then on October 7th, 2021, they held a public hearing at which they discussed the potential names, including the Jean M. Stein Community Park. As the policy states, if a park is to be named after a living individual, we have to show that there's significant contribution from that individual to the community. That was easy. Very, very easy. Full disclosure, I've known Jean my entire life. She went to church with my grandparents, which made it even more special for me to read all that. Also with the policy, as the representative, I have to inform city council of the why the Parks and Recreation Board has forwarded this name for consideration, of which the Jean M. Stein has made longstanding contributions to the city of Troy, which was recognized by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Combinations of Jean M. Stein was the most suggested name from the public. Adding "Community Park" to the name better describes the park's purpose and complements the community center. Including "community" in the name indicates that it's a gathering place of like-minded individuals. And including "community" has a connection to the community initiative to keep the civic center for civic use and provide more green space. The Parks and Recreation Board, after the public hearing was closed, resolved that the Parks and Recreation Board recommends to city council that the parkland located on Town Center adjacent to the community center be named Jean M. Stein Community Park. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kurt. Any questions for Kurt? Councilmember Hoderick.
Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd like to move I-5, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Recommendation for Naming of the Park Located on Town Center Adjacent to the Community Center. I'm going to read the resolution. Resolve that Troy City Council hereby names the park located on Town Center adjacent to the community center in Section 23, the Jean M. Stein Community Park.
Support. Moved by Councilmember Hoderick, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that we approve I-5, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Recommendation for Naming of the Park Located on Town Center Adjacent to the Community Center as the Jean M. Stein Community Park. Discussion? I'm sure there'll be some. Councilmember Abraham.
I can't think of a person so closely tied to the city, the heart of the city, than Jean Stein. And not just because she was mayor, and not just because she seems to know every resident in this city. But when you think about it, there's a reason why she knows just about everyone in the city, from school kids to those in her peer group. It's because she's everywhere, volunteering her time, volunteering her heart in so many different causes. Jean, I can't even put into words how profound my respect for you is, and I can't even put into words the amount of affection I have for you. You are an inspiration. You are the definition of community in my mind, and I can't think of a better place to put your name up on a park than in the heart of the city, which is the civic center itself. So, as you may have guessed, I will be voting yes on this resolution, and I just, I can't thank you enough for everything you've done for the city and you continue to do for the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Abraham. Councilmember Hoderick.
This is one of those decisions that's a no-brainer. And when I look out and I see Jean and former city manager Frank Gerstenhecker, the two of them sitting together, it couldn't be a more fitting moment for this park naming. You guys put in a lot of years, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, and you left an amazing legacy, mostly rooted in the integrity of serving the residents with honor, ethics, and creating community. And I can't think of a better visual in front of us as we vote on this tonight to see you both here. It means the world, and of course, I'll be supporting this as well. Jean, you're a friend to the city, and we appreciate you, and I'm glad that we'll have a park in the civic center named after you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoderick. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
So I am the newest member of council, but already Jean, you have left an indelible mark on my own service and on my life in Troy. Sitting at home is a lovely card to my son from Jean. Jean, who's come alongside our family, Shelley, your dog, and the way that you've just, you've sought to mentor and sought to care and show concern in so many ways. I will never, never, ever forget that in my entire life, and for that reason, I am so honored. I cannot think of anything more fitting than to name this park, this public space I've been excited about from the beginning, for the way that it can just bring our residents more and more into the heart of the city, along with our community center. But then, to add to that, your name and your legacy, all the more is it special and memorable. So thank you, Jean. Thank you for all of who you are and all of who we will always remember you to be.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga. Mayor Protem Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is also a very, very easy decision for me as well. Thank you, Mayor Stein, for all that you have done for our city. I mean, I think we'd be hard-pressed to find anybody who has really contributed more to the city than you have. So it's, you know, thank you for your decades of service. Thank you for being our first female mayor. Thank you for your continued, you know, activism and just being involved in volunteering and just, you're at everything. You know, we go to every event and you're still, you're still there, so it's, I mean, it's incredible. It's honestly, it is inspirational, and it's something for all of us to really look up to. And so I think you obviously deserve the respect and the honor of having this park named after you, and so I will obviously be voting yes for this.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brooks. Councilmember Hamilton.
It's hard to follow up everyone's eloquent words, but when I grew up here in Troy, Mayor Stein, or Councilmember Stein was up here the entire time I grew up here. You were always on council, and throughout my life, you're always someone I thought about when I thought of what exemplifies public service, what exemplifies serving with integrity, following the people, not engaging into the nastiness of politics, but just doing what's good for your community. This is, obviously, I'm supporting this. This is the easiest decision ever. When they first mentioned that we need to name the park, it instantly popped in my head that that's what it should be, so, and it happened. That's what the residents thought too, and I'm deeply honored to support this.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Eric Sangal.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I probably would be redundant to say how I feel about Jean Stein. I remember when I first moved here many years ago, your name came up frequently among people I would meet. They would, you know, they would talk about how wonderful it was having you on council and as mayor. And like Councilmember Hamilton, when I heard that we were going to be naming this park, especially given that it was a park at the community center that you fought so hard to preserve, yours was the first name that popped into my head, and I thought, I'm so glad, I'm so glad that the Parks and Rec Committee had recommended that your name be placed on this park, along with community, because your service has always been about community. So, thank you for all your years of service, and I'll obviously be supporting this and to honor you and to let people know what integrity and community service looks like. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Eric Sangal. Jean, it's my turn. And it's tough. There's a lot I want to say and could say. I got to save some things for when we do the dedication of the park itself and the sign, so hopefully this spring, right Kurt? Where'd you go? There you are. All right, so we'll do that. But everything everybody said is so true, and it's exponentially true. I mean, I think what, what we can say about you just scratches the surface of who you are and what you've done for this city and continue to do for this city. And, you know, a couple years ago, we celebrated you with a proclamation here, I think it was your 90th birthday, and you've done more in those past two years than, well, I mean, it's, it's, it's amazing what you do for this community, what you do for your family, who is here to support you tonight. Obviously Frank is next to you, and I know that you worked well together in your separate roles and understood the value of those two separate roles and how this government was supposed to work. And like Councilmember Hoderick said, setting an example of integrity that I wish at times other councils before us would have followed and adhered to, would have made a big difference for our community. But we've righted that ship in many ways, and it's in good part because of who you are, Jean, and the work you did with Frank and what Frank did as well. So I'm very thankful to have you as a friend, to have you as a mentor, to have you still in this community, caring, and doing, and loving, and sharing, and doing all the wonderful things you do for the residents here. I have to, this is going to seem out of place, but these water bottles up here, I gave them to council members a couple months ago, and the impetus of that story is actually from you, because I, you showed me an old memo that you wrote back when you were mayor that you thought it was sloppy when everyone had different-looking cups. And I thought, you know, that's such a Jean Stein thing. And so of course, some of you didn't bring it tonight, but most of us are pretty consistent, and we're trying to stay streamlined, and that's because of you, Mayor Jean Stein. So I just have, for some reason, that's dawned on me just now. But we are so excited about this park in general. Anytime you get to dedicate a new park and have a new park in a city like ours, which we know green space and recreation is such an important part of what our residents want, to add into it that it's on our civic center property, which at over 100 acres, you know, is the gem of our city, and there's been such a strong reaction to what we do and don't do on that property, to have it be the park of the future for this city, where we're working on bigger and more exciting things to add to that park and to grow from that nexus right there next to the community center, and to know that it's always going to be the Jean M. Stein Community Park, and that generations from now will go to that park and will, you know, some of them will have to ask who that was, and they're going to hear all about it, and they're going to know, because your footprint's not only going to be on that park, but all over our city and our residents. So Jean, of course I will be supporting it. I'm looking forward to calling for the vote here in about 10 seconds. We love you. We're so happy that you're here tonight and that you're feeling well to be here. I think that is a wonderful thing, too. So with that, I'm going to ask for the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Motion carries. All right. I'm actually going to call for a five-minute recess, in case you and your entire family don't want to stick around for the rest. It'll take five minutes, folks. So it'll take five minutes, folks. All right. We'll wait just another second for our city manager, so.
Mayor, I do, I do know. Got the memo.
I'll have to get it next time.
Failure.
I know, right?
I left mine on my counter.
I don't know. Sorry. All right, back on the record, we move back in our agenda to de-carryover items. There are none this evening. There are no public hearings this evening, so we move on to public comment. As a reminder, the rules for public comment are printed in the agenda packet. We ask that you make sure you're familiar with those rules, recognizing that it is not a back-and-forth between council and the public speaker. You have three minutes to speak. The light up here will light green when you start. When the light turns yellow, you have one minute left, and when it turns red, that's the end of your three minutes. So please be aware of that timing. Also, as a reminder, any kind of applause or communication during public comment other than the speaker for the three minutes is prohibited, and we ask that you follow these rules. So first up, signed up for public comment is Namratha Sandadi.
Good evening, Mayor and respected council members. My name is Namratha Sandadi, and just a little background about me. My parents immigrated to the States when I was nearly five in pursuit of the American dream, and we've lived here, and we've lived here for nearly 23 years. As an alumnus of both the Troy School District and a proud Spartan, I identify myself as a Michigander. Growing up, my greatest wish was to fit in, make friends, and just become well-adjusted to my environment. When I started school, I was given a dose of reality, of what others think of both my culture and background, the typical stereotypes associated with Indians, the funny accents, idol worship, different dressing, et cetera. I didn't know what to think. Any heritage, be it Hispanic, Hindu, African, is priceless because it's knowledge gained through millions of lives, billions and trillions of experiences. But different is often misconstrued and ridiculed. And the labels put on my culture early on prompted me to question, explore, and form my own opinions. Initially, my parents took me to HSS-run Balgoklin in the Parthia Temple, so that I learnt about the history and tenants of Hindu culture, the significance of festivals, famous heroes and their contributions to society, yoga, meditation, et cetera. One of my favorite festivals has always been Rakshabandhan, and we've always celebrated it with great fanfare. It's a festival that commemorates the relationships we maintain in our lives as brothers and sisters of a shared community. Its literal meaning is bond of protection. As we tie rocky or thread around the wrist, we're thanking them for being in our lives and praying for their safety and happiness. When I watched the comments of the 10/11 City Council meeting on HSS and Hindus in general, I was stunned and more so offended. A few questions came up in my mind. If someone goes to Sunday School, would you call it a training camp? If they take a symbol of your culture, misrepresent it, and use it for violence, does that mean you approve of it? Family, friends, community, and humanity are our foremost responsibility. The concept of Hindu Dharma is the core tenet of what HSS strives to teach.
Samdadi, that's your three minutes this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a way we can turn up the volume on that? Because it's even difficult for me to hear up here. I don't know about the rest. Is this high as it goes? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I think the chief just yelled at Jean Stein and party, and they'll be a little quieter now, so. All right. Next up for public comment is Gita Venkatesh.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I am a resident of this wonderful city of Troy. First, I would like to thank Mayor Baker for honoring us by giving the Diwali proclamation. I would like to make, take a moment to talk about my association with HSS in Troy. In 2006, my husband and I, with our two children, made this wonderful city of Troy as our home. Soon, we came across HSS, and we decided to join their classes on Hindu heritage and culture that included games, yogas, stories, and community services. My children started enjoying these weekly classes, and I too, as a parent, enjoyed these activities. In 2017, as a part of HSS program, my middle schooler and others joined up for year-long tutoring program. They helped elementary students who needed additional support in academics in Carlton Elementary School in Detroit. HSS coordinated to help in this after-school tutoring program. It was nice to see how my children enjoyed helping others selflessly. In 2018 and 19, HSS youth helped in various activities like maple syrup days, cleaning up museum rooms, beautification of gardens, Thanksgiving parade, and many more at Troy Historical Museum and Troy Nature Center. In April 2019, four children from HSS were nominated and recognized at the event of annual youth recognition awards sponsored by a well-known organization of Troy Youth Assistance. This award was given for their exemplary contribution to the community. They also helped food banks like Cleaners and Forgotten Harvest to pack food and vegetables. They used to enjoy helping. The sense of being useful to the community used to make them very happy. It was nice to see how HSS helped to grow them as a model citizen with compassion for less privileged. In 2016 to 2019, for four successive years, they did the one school supply drive for underprivileged children for Carlton Elementary School in Detroit and Doyle Rider Elementary in Flint, provided them with the soup supplies. And in 2020, when COVID hit this country, Michigan faced shortage of food and masks. HSS youth made food boxes and masks and donated them to different places, including senior homes and hospitals. I can't thank HSS enough for building up the good character in my children and many others, helping them to help others by being selfless and humble and compassionate to others. To summarize, I would say HSS is creating great future citizens of our country of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Srisha Krishna.
Namaste all. Vastuva kutumbukum means "the world is my family." This is a fundamental principle of Hinduism. Hindus have been inclusive, accepting, never exclusive, most importantly, never negated the existence of any other philosophical, spiritual, or religious thought. I have been a resident of Troy for last four years. I admire the pluralistic nature of the society we have built here. Hard-working people like you have built this beautiful city where colors, different colors, races, region, and live in harmony. The mayor's recent gesture of celebrating our festival of Rakshabandhan, which means "safety and bond with us," is a true reflection of the harmony we all been living here. At HSS, we provide cultural classes, introduce elements of Hinduism such as yoga and seva, which means "service." Through our regular service activities and outreach projects, we foster a sense of civic duty, responsibility, and volunteerism. During a pandemic, we created a program for underprivileged communities in Detroit, Flint, and Sterling Heights for a food drive. Volunteer across Michigan were mobilized, and thousands of food packets were delivered. We collaborated with the churches and other faith-based organizations for last-mile delivery. More than 95% of the recipients of the service neither from Hindu faith nor from Indian-American ethnicity. We reach out to people in need irrespective of their faith, gender, and race. We worked on delivering thousands of masks nearby hospitals when many were not ready to come out of their houses. The smiles and gratitude of the people who we served are the two testimony of our work. In last session, I was able to, you know, there was an attempt to malign, tarnish the image of Hindus and HSS. We promote interfaith dialogue and pluralism as a part of the core values. Some vested interests are trying to create disturbance in the city. This is the attempt to spread hatred among the peacefully-loving living people of Troy. I heard a lot of Hindu-hated, Hindu-phobic slurs. I wonder what's the motivation of the people who traveled thousands of miles just to spread a hatred of in the society. We full-heartedly support the city council and the mayor, and we'll do, continue to do our little services as we, with all of his support. And we hereby invite you to join our weekly gatherings and our special functions to experience our organization. Thank you for listening to me patiently. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Sayli Neethan.
Honorable Mayor, Mr. Baker, and the council members of City of Troy. I am a resident of Troy from past 10 years. We all are proud of the City of Troy as the best example of the vibrant inclusiveness of its diverse backgrounds and cultures. of its diverse backgrounds and cultures. In the last meeting, some politically motivated people brought down this inclusiveness and created a hateful and ugly scenario by making extremely inflammatory allegations and hateful comments related to HSS and the Hindu community at large. As we all know, HSS is a US-based humanitarian organization where we only learn about giving back to the community, loving and respecting each and everyone irrespective of their faith. HSS brings in great Hindu pluralistic values in making us not only a good citizen but a good human. It is appalling to hear the slander and maligning remarks made against the truly peaceful Hindu community. The people who decried the truth are themselves defaulters. They themselves have an ulterior Hindu-phobic agenda against Hindus, spreading lies, hate, and false accusations. They belong to anti-Hindu groups that have sole purpose of attacking anything that is related to Hinduism. The words used in relation to HSS like fascism and paramilitary are baseless and venomous allegations. For the last several months, these groups have gone as far as attacking our state representative Padma Kupa just for being a Hindu. As you can see, their motives are obvious. For any city council, it is important to judge its constituents based on their actions locally. It should not heed the baseless and vilifying attacks of vested interests. I appeal to the council members to reflect upon your personal interactions with the Hindu community and HSS and based on our actions, based on your experience, and not based on the folks that came to the council with a divisive and malicious agenda. I look upon the Troy Council to be mindful of the Hindu community's pain. Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you. Next up is Lalit Seifi.
Honorable Mayor, Mr. Baker, and council member of the City of Troy. Namaste, brothers and sisters from Troy. My name is Lalit Sethi, resident of Troy since past 20 years, proud father of two daughters who are by now grown up and taxpayers in US. I was born in Delhi, India, and I was brought up actually in Germany. My basic schooling, my engineering degree, I got it from Germany. Moved here 20 years back, and when I moved back here, this is what we all, people from India do, wherever we move, we want to give back. I founded this Detroit Education Society nonprofit organization that has been tutoring since 2013 Detroit Public School students through the support of our students from Troy High School, Novi High School, UFM. So last year, 2020, when the pandemic was up, we tutored 250 students in Detroit every week, each and every week we have been tutoring. Education is what brought us here. We Indian people came through our education, and this is what we wanted to give back. And so we made the mission of our Detroit Education Society to give back the same education. We wanted to say thank you to the community who welcomed us here and made us a new home. We call it now our new home. I learned to give back to community from HSS, a US nonprofit organization that teaches us values for life and to serve others in need. We Indian-Americans, we take pride in our Hindu faith that calls out all humans to be our family. We do not force our faith on others, nor we convert. No wonder that great spiritual leaders known for nonviolence originated out of India such as Mahatma Gandhi, Lord Mahavir, reform of Jainism faith, Guru Nanak, creator of Sikh faith, Siddhartha Gautama, the Buddha, the creator of Buddhism faith. Hinduism is a pluralistic society and highly diverse. We are used to live in peace with other faith followers all over the planet, and we are known for that. We were shocked when last week few individuals walked in this sacred house who bashed Hindu organization like HSS. From my research, I have collected evidence, and I have that with me, and I'd like to share with you after that. Some of those Hindu-phobic speakers were not Troy resident, nor were they Michiganders. The same individual walked the very next day in the Canton City Hall, and he went further to Houston and spread Hindu hate by misrepresenting the fact. There were few more like that. You may or may not know, you know, one of the speaker is a separatist terrorist organization, kind of part of that.
Mr. Sethi, that's your three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us time. Namaste.
Next up is Ali Apahedian.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ali, and I'm a resident of Troy. One of the greatest gifts we've been given on this earth is our children. We have the privilege to nurture, instruct, and protect them. Anytime anyone or anything interferes with or threatens our God-given right to parent, then our God-given instinct and duty to defend our kids kick in. Last week, I spoke at the Troy School Board meeting, and I exposed one of the most wicked and vile poisons made available to our kids, and that's child pornography. And this pornography is being made available of all places in our school libraries. Michigan law makes it very clear that disseminating sexually explicit matter to minors is a felony. And just when you think it can get any worse, this pornography is not just in our school libraries, but it's also in our own Troy public library. And if you or anyone else in our community has any doubt that our library would carry child pornography, here's the book. I checked it out myself. And I'm not sure what angered me more, the fact that I found this book in our public library, or the conversation I had with the library employee at the front desk while I was checking the book out. I asked specifically if there was any kind of filter, if there was any kind of flagging or trigger in the library computer system that would prevent any 11- or 12-year-old from checking this book out. And she assured me that any child can check this book out without parental approval or without a parent being present. This is why thousands of parents are outraged right now in Troy, and probably thousands more will be once they find out that their tax dollars were used to buy child pornography for our public library. Our community, our parents, and especially our kids deserve better. And Mr. Mayor and council members, I hope you stand up and do what's right for the protection of our kids. I hope you don't let politics and government red tape get in the way of removing this illegal garbage from our library. I will use the remainder of my time, and I'm going to silence, to show you what this pornographic book and let it speak for itself.
Next up for public comment is Ganesh Reddy. Ali, don't forget your phone.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Troy is a beautiful city, and I've been here for more than 20 years, and this is my second home. And I was watching the last City Council meeting, and that made me I should stay here and comment on that. They have traveled across the states. They don't even belong here. I think some of them are from the West Coast and East Coast. They came here all here. One of the main speakers first spoke. He is under the radar of Indian intelligence wing, you know, they are being following him. He created a toolkit to destabilize the Indian government, you know. So they are after him and the other person also. You should see why they should travel so many miles to come to City of Troy and spread hate in a peace-loving community. You never heard any problem with the Hindu community here. They are all very peace-loving community. They care about everybody. And as far as the organization they were blaming, it is no Nazism. There is no KKK. They are just a service-oriented organization. I don't know where they're getting the thing from, and I have been to the parent organization when I was growing up in India. It is called Rashishevakshank. The service is the main motto, you know. They service everybody. During the COVID time in India, there were a lot of dead bodies. They gave a very honorable cremation for most of them, and nobody was coming out. They went to the community and serviced everybody. And I will forward some of the research from the two speakers that they came, that why they are banned in India and that they are doing, they are funded by some vested interest from Chinese groups, the Chinese government, as well as some other group to destabilize India and Hindus. So please don't, you didn't do nothing wrong by attending the Raksha Bandhan, it was nothing, you didn't go to a NALC organization or a KKK organization. They are a very good group, you know. So please don't believe them because they are not even residents of Michigan or city. And I'm thankful for your proclamation, and I thank Governor Whitmer also for the proclamation in so many other states. This is a very sacred month for us. And I wanted to tell you one thing, Hinduism is there mostly only in India. It is not even a religion, it's a way of life. When Mughals invaded India and Britishers invaded India, they made it a religion. Different part of the country is based on nature, the whole, our way of life is based on nature. We worship sun, we worship almost everything, including the animals, you know. The thing is, it is 10,000 years old, older than Judaism. If you see, we don't forcefully convert anybody or go to anybody and spread our religion. All the people used to come in the ancient days, one of the ancient civilizations in the world, you know. I wanted you to think about it. Please don't believe all the things that is being hated, being spread, and I thank you for listening. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Next up is Harsha Krishna.
I'm known as Dr. Krishna. I'm practicing here for past 20 years. I'm in Michigan, I'm a Michigan resident for 27 years as of now. I'm in a small social group recently. I don't have time before, but I was just watching what's happening. Somebody sent, Whitmer, our governor, she announced this as like a heritage month. I was so happy looking at that, you know, Indians are recognized here. At the same time, immediately I saw another video, immediately, it was a Troy Council meeting two weeks ago. So going through that, I felt very bad, very bad. I don't know why, you know, even council members are allowing that, allowing some religious people coming and talking about other religions. Actually, Hindu as, continuing as Ganesh Reddy, Hinduism is not a religion, actually. It's more than 10,000 years old, more, I don't know how old, but it's, it's a religion that came after maybe past 2,000 years, maybe. How many, I don't know yet. I don't practice, and I go to church. I did so many fundraisings to do donation of the food, like even my son, he's 16-year-old, he did like 11,000 donated to Pontiac Church for food for poor, you know, who don't have during this COVID time. I did several vaccines given in the churches, and also next week I'm doing in the temple, maybe a couple of hundred people are coming for booster vaccine and all that. We don't look at religion and all that, you know, we do help people. And, you know, I request Mayor not to allow one religious people come here and talk about other religion that will become a civil war, unnecessary fight and all that. And I never practiced, you know, I don't know what these religions and all that, but I was looking why people are talking this, and I went and Googled and searching, just now pulling like what top 100 terrorist incidents, terrorist activities happen, how many people are involved. I never see any Hindu doing like a bombings or nothing was there, and particularly there are like 95% to one religion, maybe 5% another religion. I don't want, I want to bring those here, but it creates more chaos. Does one religion so much involved in terrorism and all that, and maybe few other religions? But I never saw a Hindu who practiced Hindu or even Hindu from India went to doing any terrorist activities or any of that. It belongs to just, majority are from one religion, but I don't want, bring those numbers, put it here to make it more chaos. And I really appreciate if Mayor can take action in the future. We are talking here not to talk one religion or other religion.
Thank you, Dr. Krishna.
Thank you again, and God bless America.
Thank you. Next up is Andrew Siznoski.
I'm Andrew Siznoski, candidate for Troy City Council. And over the years, there's been overwhelming support for increased taxpayer funding of our library, but I'm not sure our hard-working taxpayers are getting what they signed up for. As you heard earlier this evening, there's pornographic and anti-Christian materials and books being pushed to our children in the Troy library. I'd like to ask for an investigation to be launched to find out why taxpayers are paying for this filth in our library and making it available for children to check out. Who submitted a requisition for the purchases of these books? Who authorized the purchase orders? What other books are being made available to our children? How does the city not have internal controls to prevent this from happening? Is there no local oversight or control, or are we simply following recommendations by woke organizations like the American Library Association? The city should notify the parents of every child to check this book out and issue a written apology immediately. With the upcoming election, our voters deserve to know if the candidates seeking reelection as well as other members of council support making pornographic materials as well as anti-inclusive hate speech available to schoolchildren in the library. As a candidate for City Council, I want to go on record that I will never support hate speech against any religious group or making pornographic materials available to children. If this board is unable to unanimously denounce this book and others like it from being included in our Troy library, our residents have to think long and hard before they vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes those who have signed up for public comment this evening. Next up on the agenda, City Council or City Administration response and reply to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I love so much about Troy, having lived in Troy for 45 years, is the great diversity that we've had in the city. It's only become more diverse over time, and that has led to the richness and the beauty of this community. Several speakers mentioned some of the comments that came up during public comment at the October 11 meeting. And I find them to be extremely unfortunate that someone or a number of people came to speak about a great portion of the city's community in that way. Growing up here in Troy, many of my friends were Hindu, my college roommates were Hindu. I've been to the UFM Diwali performances every year. I've been to Sanghits, Pujas. I've never found my Hindu friends and Hindu neighbors to be anything other than peaceful. I too am a daughter of immigrants, and my parents, and my aunts, and my uncles. I too am a daughter of immigrants and my parents and my aunts and my uncles all had accents as well. And so that has never troubled me and I've never quite understood why it's troubled others. One of the things that I'm most proud of, having been on council these past six years, is that this council, particularly over time, has been outright in their demonstration of their appreciation for the diverse community that we have and the establishment of the Global Troy Advisory Committee. And that this council wanting to partner with that committee to make sure that the beauty that exists in our diversity is well-understood. We live in troubled times and fear causes people to say pretty hateful things. And I can't think of a time other, like now, where that Global Troy Advisory Committee and this council's actions to support it could come at a better junction. This council supports our community and our Hindu community members are not secondary to anyone else, just like people of my faith are second to no one else, people of my background are second to no one else. We are a community. I appreciate the, the very civil tone that came into the council chambers today because it was a troubling council meeting a couple of weeks ago. One resident asked the question of, you know, how, how can we let a conversation, how can we let words spoken about a religion be said at the, at the council podium? And that's because we do have freedom of speech and we cannot put shackles on what people say or can't say. There are some parameters within our public comment. So please understand that sometimes unpleasant things are said at the, at the podium that we may not agree with, but they get said. And what we can do, the best thing that we can do, all of us, is to rise above and continue to act with the sense of peace, with the sense of dignity and with the sense of decorum that proves beyond a shadow of a doubt that you are a peaceful and loving people with community service in your hearts.
Thank you, Councilmember.
That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Abraham. Councilmember Erickson Galt.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank those of you who came here today to set the record straight about a wonderful local organization that focuses on service and to express your concern about comments that were made two weeks ago. I echo what Councilmember Abraham said, those comments were unfortunate. And as she said, it's true, people have a right to free speech, but we also have rules here and one of our rules does prevent our speakers from making derogatory or disparaging comments about any individual or group. And perhaps we need to look at how we can do a better job of making sure that our public comment session isn't used as an opportunity to demean others either personally or a group as a whole, to paint them with a broad brush and try to claim that those groups or individuals are engaged in some sort of wrongdoing. I'm not sure how we achieve that. It's definitely a difficult, difficult balance. We don't screen what people are here to say. They come up to the podium, they say what they say. And I know our mayor does a good job of trying to moderate the comments, but there are limits to, to what we can do. But perhaps we need to think a little harder about maybe trying to do a better job to make sure that no individual or group is slandered at our podium as, as happened two weeks ago. So thank you for coming and expressing your opinion. And as Councilmember Abraham said, thank you for doing so in a civil and respectful manner. That's always appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson Galt. Councilmember Hoderich.
I appreciate that folks came to talk to us so that we would have an understanding of our fellow members of the community. And it occurs to me that this may be one of the first times you've paid attention to who's sitting up here and representing you as residents and that you may not understand, if you don't know us, the spirit of our behaviors in the community over a long period of time and how we have collectively embraced pluralism, as several of you commented at the microphone. There are times when things go on in our nation where we then rally around in support of our fellow residents who may feel, be feeling the pain of those actions. I think of the Tree of Life shootings in Pennsylvania when that happened. And a number of us attended, went to the synagogue to join with our fellow residents. And I know there were, there was at least one fellow Hindu resident that went to lock arms with them. That's just one example of the harmony and the neighborliness and the love that residents of multiple colors, multiple faiths, multiple accents have demonstrated in the community. And many members of your city council over time, not even just this one, but even prior to this, have been a part of that. That's part of the spirit and the DNA of the community. We're all human beings living in a very diverse world and we're going to have moments. And I hope a moment in a council chamber will not supersede for you or overshadow the foundational spirit of community and the embracing of diversity, the very fabric that makes Troy such a wonderful place to grow up in, to raise children in, to live in, and to celebrate so many different traditions together. And I think that's our charge is to keep moving forward together in the community that we all know we are. And, you know, when I think of Diwali, mentioned in the proclamation tonight, the celebration of light over darkness, let's celebrate the light, let's focus on the light, let's give oxygen to the light. We've done that for many years here. We've had moments in our community, every community does. And how we can move forward together is to continue on as we have. And I make that commitment to my fellow residents. I have my traditions, my celebrations, Scotch, Irish, German, sitting here, who has marveled. I've been to the temple, I've been to the synagogue, I went to the Caldean Catholic Church one time and didn't know any of the language, but I knew the entire mass because I'm familiar with it in English. When we can understand and build relationships with one another, and I realize you all don't know all of us, but that's the Troy that I live in, that I lock arms with, with colleagues. And I hope that that can be what you take away and remember from a council chamber experience versus maybe the one that you heard a few weeks ago. As fellow Troy residents, that, that matters, our safety as a community is something we all value. It's our number one priority for residents. And I suspect maybe you felt a bit unsafe. We understand that. And I think the safety comes when we all continue to just keep locking arms together. And, you know, I commit to that and frankly, I know everyone sitting at this council table does. So please take that with you as you go forth to continue to live, work, play, worship or not in the community. That's what's important to Troy and that's what makes Troy so amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoderich. Mayor Pertham Brooks.
I can speak really quickly. Thank you, Mayor. I first want to thank all of you for being here and I completely understand your concerns. Obviously, as a black American, I can understand firsthand how hurtful it can feel when people are painting all of your, people of your background or your race, your religion or your culture, all in one brush. I happen to know firsthand very well the Hindu culture and the Hindu religion, just based on my own personal relationships, very, very close relationships throughout my entire life. So I already know that you have a beautiful and rich and wonderful just religion and culture. So in like Councilmember Hoderich was saying, you may not know us. And so I'm just kind of letting you know where we are, that we feel you, that we understand you. I understand where you're coming from. I understand you're hurt, I understand your concerns, I understand your pain, but we support you. We support all of you. We support everyone in our community. And I think Troy is a wonderful, wonderful city because of its diversity, because of the fact that we can be all, all together and alongside each other and support each other. We may not be of the same religion or race or culture, but we can all respect each other. And so I think moving forward, that's something I want to continue to see and I, I just really do understand, I understand where you're coming from. But we do support you as a council. We do understand you and we support every member of our community. So just understand that.
Thank you, Mayor Pertham Brooks. All right. Couple of things. First, City Manager Miller or City Attorney Bloom, could you please make sure Mr. Apoheian knows the proper city procedure for challenging any specific book or any questionable material at the Troy Public Library? I know there is a system, or at least there has been in the past. I know when people have expressed concern, if you could at least connect with him on that to make sure that can be addressed.
Yes.
Thank you. The same First Amendment right that allowed Mr. Apoheian to come up and show the picture of the book is the same thing we struggle with in this chamber when it comes to public comment. And obviously, this country values the First Amendment as all of our amendments. And it's difficult for us here in this council chamber to be, to face, to be faced with hate speech, to be faced with statements from people that are, we're not given the opportunity to fact-check in the moment and we're expected to respond, knowing that through most of this, many of you have been recording, we're being recorded on YouTube right now. We also know that unlike a book you check out in the library, social media can go up much quicker and can be shared much faster, as I witnessed and experienced this past month because of some of the comments made in this chamber. And being painfully aware of all that, anything I say right now is at risk of being amplified to a much louder level than maybe it should be when I'm trying to have a conversation with those of you here in this room as well as the community at large. Certainly, everything our council members have said tonight about the value we place on the diversity of our city, it cannot be overstated. And it's diversity of faith, it's diversity of heritage, it's diversity of socioeconomic status, of gender, of everything that we love about this community. Everybody in this community is valuable to this city and makes up what the city of Troy Looking ironically, as Councilmember Erickson Galt was speaking about, you know, what we can stop theoretically, there is language even printed in our agenda packet that talks about if there's, there could be immediate consequences for using expletives or derogatory or disparaging comments about any individual or group. The problem, as I'm sure Councilmember Erickson Galt recognizes, is kind of what I said at the beginning, how do we fact-check in real time to stop that? And if that is the right thing to do? I don't feel comfortable stating that any of us up at this table has the ability to make those judgment calls on the spot absent something so obvious. And I, I would like to say that we could do a better job of that, but it's going to take some work to try to figure out how that could be. So the best we can hope for, I can hope for, is that we keep some of this hateful commentary out of this chamber, focus on the public safety, infrastructure, quality of life issues that we're tasked to do at city council here in Troy. So I ask the community at whole to try to be mindful of that, recognizing you do have a First Amendment right to speak, but understanding that we're here for a very specific purpose for our community. And we'd like to do our best job possible and keep it at that level. I think tonight, that's all I'm going to say on the matter. Again, I appreciate the passion everybody brought up to the podium tonight. It's an interesting night. I traditionally, the past couple election cycles, the last meeting before an election, there's nothing on the agenda. It's over in about 25 minutes. Tonight's a little different. So we're happy to have you here at least. It's good to see people in the chamber and I appreciate you coming out tonight. That concludes city council, city administration response, reply to public comment. There are no postponed items this evening. We move on to regular business other than the item we already handled. Actually, I'll go ahead and give you a minute to...
I was going to ask if you can make a motion to have a five-minute...
Let's take a five-minute recess. All right, we're back on the record. There we go. You can keep it off, it's fine. Let's see. No postponed items. We're back onto regular business. There are no board and committee appointments this evening, so we go to I-2 Board and Committee nominations. First up are mayoral nominations. I have a couple this evening. First up is I'd like to nominate to the Global Troy Advisory Committee Edward Cheswick for the unexpired term expiring October 30th, 2022.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga, that I nominate Edward Cheswick to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the unexpired term expiring October 30th, 2022. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga.
Quickly, I cannot imagine a better person to have appointed than Ed Cheswick. So thank you so much for that. He will be a great addition to the group.
Actually, City Clerk Dixon, I just realized I have more nominations to that same board. Should I amend what I just stated?
Yes, you can amend it.
Like to I amend, make a motion to amend the nominations to the Global Troy Advisory Committee. In addition to Edward Cheswick, I'd like to nominate or renominate Ani Fakori, Saida Mohadine and Sunil Sekri for the terms expiring October 30th, 2024 as well.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga. Was that on the amendment or was that on the whole thing?
This is the amendment.
Say it again?
This is the amendment.
This is the amendment. That I move that we amend my initial motion and add those additional members as nominated. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
This is on the amendment. Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson-Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
If the amendment motion carries, now I'd like to call for the vote on the amended motion, which includes those four individuals nominated to the Global Troy Advisory Committee.
Yes. Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson-Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up to the Local Development Finance Authority, I'd like to nominate Louis Starks as the Oakland County Representative.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Abraham, that I nominate Louis Starks as the Oakland County Representative to the Local Development Finance Authority. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Erickson-Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes mayoral nominations this evening. My understanding is there's no City Council nominations. I-3, there's no request for a closed session this evening, so we move on to I-4, Proposed New Ethics Ordinance for Elected and Appointed Officials, and that'll be introduced by City Attorney Lori Greig Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that has been a long time coming. And so it is a new Chapter 14A, which is a proposed ethics ordinance for elected and appointed officials. Also with that, we removed some of the language from Chapter 14. And so there is also, and put it in 14A so that it is consolidated so that the, so that there's one chapter that covers the elected and appointed officials. So it covers the mandatory disclosure statements, which was formerly in 14. So there is a proposed amendment to Chapter 14 as well, which is a deletion of the language that is actually included in Chapter 14A. So hopefully, that's clear. It was presented to council as a report and communication in the last council agenda packet, and there have been a couple of minor revisions, but for the most part, it remains as it was when presented to you previously. And I'm happy to address any questions that you have.
Thank you, City Attorney Bloom. Quick question that I thought of. Does this new ordinance affect our council rules of procedure and will those need to be amended in any fashion related to this?
So thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. The first meeting, the organizational meeting, that's usually a time when we do look at the rules of procedure. There is some language in the rules of procedure that talks about the code of ethics. Again, that has been incorporated into this new ordinance, so there will very likely be some changes that will be necessary to your rules of procedure. I would also encourage all of the council members, if you have any other changes, please review the rules of procedure. There have been a couple of other mentions tonight about maybe some other things that could be looked into. So that certainly is something that City Administration is happy to receive your comments on and we're happy to work with you so that you have a document that you can approve at a future meeting.
Thank you. Any other specific questions? Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga.
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick questions. So I know it says we will revisit this every November, so if approved tonight, then it still will be revisited in a couple of weeks after the election. Is that correct?
The intent was not to be able to revisit it, but of course, it's an ordinance, so you know, you can revisit it at any point in time. It is your prerogative to do that. Since it is just being proposed so soon, you know, before the November election, it's not necessary this particular year, but certainly you can do it at any point in time.
Right, that was probably rules of procedure that were talked about that are revisited every year. Okay. The other quick question is it mentions about this yearly ethics training. Is that something that would begin, you know, after we, if it passes tonight then? Kind of what is the calendar year of a year? Is it fiscal year or November to November?
Yeah, so really, November to November would be the appropriate timeframe. It does allow for internal ethics training, and I would just indicate that for some of the boards, we've already been doing that as encouraged by City Council in our previous discussions. So that is something that will continue. I think it's a great idea, obviously, continuing to have that first and foremost in all of our minds, I think, is always very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney Bloom, so it says in the, you know, in one of the statements was the City Council members shall not attend any board or committee meetings where we are appointed or approved. So essentially, that's any board meeting, any board or committee that's the city unless we're on it.
The one exception would be there are certain boards and committees when council members serve as members, appointed members to those entities. But yes, that is correct and that is actually a policy that has been encouraged. This is basically just codifying it into the ordinance. And the reason for that is that you don't want to have it appear that you are undo, creating undue influence over a decision. You want their decisions to be independent and you don't want them to feel like they have to vote a certain way. You want that recommendation or that vote to be made very independently.
Any other questions? All right, I'd like to move I-4, Proposed New Ethics Ordinance for Elected and Appointed Officials, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by, excuse me, moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Erickson-Galt, that we approve I-4, Proposed New Ethics Ordinance for Elected and Appointed Officials, as printed in the agenda packet. Now it's time for discussion. Councilmember Hamilton?
Just want to very strongly thank City Attorney Bloom and your staff for putting this together. It was extremely comprehensive, long overdue, and I wouldn't say, I feel like this closes a chapter, but I think this is an important step to help us move on from the past and where we were before. And I look forward to looking, I like the idea of looking into this every year to see how we can tweak it and improve it. There's different ideas I had, but you know, I think this is, covers so much what we need to do that we'll continue that discussion as we go and we'll see how this works. But I am very strongly in support of this and I'm just very grateful for this.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga?
Just share briefly, I think as Councilmember Hamilton knows and Councilmember Hoderick knows, as we've been speaking with a lot of residents lately, I think something that people really appreciate is the way that this council has really committed itself to a higher standard of ethics and transparency. And I think this ethics ordinance, kind of bringing it all together and the deep dive that we did last year, kind of going over our rules, our own kind of, our own kind of ethics that we want to hold ourselves to, was a step in that direction. And actually, I was talking to a resident just tonight on the phone and that was something that, you know, everyone still does remember, remembers the former period of time and they really appreciate that we have made great strides in how we're moving forward. So again, I just see this as just an embodiment of the way that we, we've come far and we continue to move forward very much. So thank you so much again, City Attorney Bloom, for your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain-Krengga. Mayor Protem Brooks?
Thank you. As I was reading this ethics ordinance, I had a lot of thoughts and I took a lot of notes, but I'll be very brief. First, I would just like to thank Attorney Bloom and city staff for taking the time to really put together this comprehensive ethics ordinance policy because I think it's so critical and it just really shows, you know, to our residents that this is a priority for us and, you know, it's a priority for our city and that we do take this seriously. And it is very comprehensive. I really appreciate the definitions that were provided. I think it's great that we have to review and sign it every year and do the training. I also like the fact that every year, it gives us an opportunity to modify it because it's not something that's set in stone, because some things, it may make sense one year, maybe we need to adjust it another year. So I think it's always important for us to be revisiting this document. The other thing I really liked was the section on violations, which does give it some teeth in the sense that there are some consequences for individuals who don't follow through on some of the things that are being asked of them to do. So I do appreciate that. Obviously, at the end of the day, it does say, you know, this is a self-enforcing policy. So, you know, we are relying on individuals to hold high standards of, you know, ethics and morals. And so, but I do hope that by increasing the transparency, you know, by, you know, the showing how, what the gifts we, you know, disclosing gifts and all the other disclosures, that maybe it'll be more transparent and that there may, if there's individuals that are violating these morals and ethics, you know, and not holding themselves to high ethical standards, that hopefully individuals will be able to, you know, residents will see that. And, you know, and obviously will have to be handled at the ballot box through the democratic process essentially. So I do really thank you for putting this together. I think it was a very, very good policy, so.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brooks. Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we've all been looking forward to this ordinance. Most people don't get excited about ordinances, but this is one, I think collectively, we've been eager to see and I'd say it didn't disappoint. What I really appreciate about this is the clarity and the, you know, the examples of where there could be perceived conflict or perceived ethics violation, even if there isn't an actual one. And I think in the past, that has led to slippery slopes and maybe acceptance of behaviors as normal when maybe they, not maybe, they shouldn't have been. We live in cynical times. We live in an era of mistrust, particularly with elected officials. And while we can't change the world, what we can do is change our corner of it and hopefully move the needle in terms of gaining trust with our residents and hopefully those that have had their trust broken, this is a step forward. And for those who perhaps didn't have their trust broken, can look to this as an example of what we're doing to make sure that we stay on the straight and narrow path that we need to be on. So thank you, Lori, for pulling this together, you and staff. I know it was no small project, but this is well appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Abraham. Councilmember Erickson-Galt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I love what Councilmember Abraham said about how there is just an aura of distrust of government in our country. And I love that this ordinance is a step forward in trying to restore at least some measure of trust in our local government. Public polls show that while the public often mistrusts what's happening at a national or a state level, they often have a deep feeling of trust in their local leaders. And I think it's unfortunate that some of the incidents that have happened over the last several years prior to this council just damaged that trust that our public could have in their local officials. I very much appreciate all the, the mayor and other members of council that I serve with here. I think that we as a body have moved forward in trying to restore that trust and this is one more step along that road. I especially appreciate the disclosure requirements. It's often said that sunshine is the best disinfectant and so if people are disclosing, it is really hard for people to be hiding their ulterior motives and to, it gives people the information they need to understand where their elected officials are coming from. And I also appreciate the training that goes along with this. I think there's a lot in here and again, thank you, City Attorney Bloom and all the members of your staff that contributed. members of your staff that contributed to this. It's very comprehensive. There's a lot in here. I know as I'm reading it, I'm thinking, boy, I'm looking forward to that training, because I want to make sure that I am not overlooking anything in here. There is a lot in there, but it's all good stuff. It's important. It's things that, some of it is intuitive, and some of it is like, you know, maybe it's not, doesn't come naturally to think about who you might be meeting with, or where, you know, what statements you might be making. And I think that's where the training can come in to help us and other, and I like the fact that it includes members of some of our important commissions and boards here. Their ethical standards are important as well. So thank you again for all the work you did, and I'm looking forward to voting for this.
Thank you, councilmember Erickson Galt. Councilmember Hoderick?
Well, this is the second item tonight that is a no-brainer. Thank you for the comprehensive collection of really what's been several years in the making. Everything we've learned from our forensic audit, our Plant Moran discussions and findings, and the lessons we learned collectively as a community over the past several years. One of the phrases that sticks with me from that era is, you know, tone at the top and the tone that you set. And this, this really helps set the tone at the top for us presently, and we'll have an amazing legacy going forward. So it's a consequential piece of work, and consequential item on the agenda tonight that really matters to the people we report to, our residents. And I'm just delighted to see it and to have an opportunity to vote on it tonight. I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hoderick. Again, thanks to city attorney Bloom for getting a comprehensive ordinance before us to add another level of moving the city forward from a time that we keep trying to turn the page on, but it keeps coming back a little bit in our minds, and it will for a long time. You know, everything that my fellow members up here have said tonight, there's a piece of it, and what I've thought and wanted to say has also, they've said too. It's, you know, and that I think symbolizes the unity this council does have as it relates to this issue especially. Whether we were elected to help do something like this, or we're on this board and we're desperately trying to do something to have something like this, but needed support from other council members, I think it's great to be where we are tonight with this. I'm painfully aware that nothing we ever legislate from up here will stop a criminal mastermind from doing what they're going to do. And, you know, that's the downside, right? That's the bummer statement of all of this. This doesn't make everyone in the city of Troy at this table or in City Hall perfect and do the right thing. But what I do love about it is that having this ordinance on the books helps a member of this body who may be a newer member, or even a more seasoned one, feel like they don't have to be afraid to come forward with something they see as unethical. This gives the teeth potentially, or at least some teeth, to give some confidence to that scared member of council or city employee to try to do what's right for the city of Troy and expose unethical conduct, or something along those lines. That was sorely lacking over the past several years, as several of us up here can attest to. And it was something we struggled with individually and as a body. And I've read through this ordinance several times now, and I went through different scenarios in my mind of, well, what if this? And what if so-and-so does this? What if I do this? What does this mean? Oh, wait, can I do this? I went through all of those. And I asked city attorney Bloom some of those what-ifs. I think she thought I was a little crazy at times, but, you know, I appreciate it. And the reality is, there's, like I said, there's not going to be ever a perfect ordinance that protects from all of this bad conduct, but a lot of the what-ifs that I came up with could be addressed by what we have here tonight. So I think it's an excellent, comprehensive ordinance to get us going on the pathway towards being an example in the region for how to do things right, something I've worked very hard on individually and with this body as we looked at different investigations, including of our own selves, with Plant Moran, so that we can educate others and provide a little sunshine to disinfect where necessary. So I'm excited to support this ordinance tonight. Sounds like, I think it's going to do pretty well when I call for the roll call here in a second. But again, I just want to thank you, Lori, and everyone who's worked on this. Also recognize city manager Miller and staff for what they experienced here, what they continue to work through on many different levels, and also the level of high ethical conduct we believe is happening here at City Hall, so, out of your leadership, Mark. And with that, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Goes into effect in 10 days, right, city attorney Bloom?
After publication.
After, 10 days after publication, all right. We already did I five this evening, so we move on to I six, which is a bid waiver, Hearst Strongarm Rescue Tools for the fire department. That'll be introduced by our fire chief, Chuck Reerster. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff. The fire department has utilized Hearst brand equipment, commonly referred to as the jaws of life, for lifesaving rescues for over 40 years. These tools have become so reliable to us that they've become our primary go-to tools whenever we have to disentangle somebody from either vehicles or machinery. The tools have evolved over the years from gasoline-operated, hydraulically-operated pumps, which supply energy to the tools through long hoses, to the current-day technology of self-contained, battery-operated tools. The new tool is now called the Hearst Strongarm Tool, and it no longer requires hydraulic fluid reservoirs. It doesn't require a noisy gasoline-operated hydraulic pump, and it's not limited in its use by the length of the hydraulic hoses that are connected to it. The tool is smaller, it's lighter, it's stronger, and to give you an idea of the difference, the current set of jaws that we use, you've probably seen them, they're probably about this long, they operate like this, right? They weigh between 40 and 55 pounds, depending on the tips that we're using to disentangle somebody. The new tool, including the battery and the tips, is 30 pounds. So they're quicker to deploy, they are multifunctional, and compared to their predecessors, which only have one use when we take them out, this one we can use on a couple of different things. We purchased one recent, not recently, several years back for Rescue Four. It's proven its value many times over. So the fire department is asking for approval to purchase Hearst Strongarm Tool for each of our engines to supplement our current toolbox. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Anyone like to move the, councilmember Erickson Galt?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move I six, bid waiver, Hearst Strongarm Rescue Tools, Fire Department, as printed in the agenda.
Support. Moved by councilmember Erickson Galt, supported by councilmember Hamilton, that we approve I six, bid waiver, Hearst Strongarm Rescue Tools, Fire Department, as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Always thankful to be able to help out our fire department for the good of our city, so we appreciate you bringing this to us.
On behalf of all the members, thank you very much.
Well, we haven't approved it yet.
No, no. We thank you for your support anyway.
All right, there you go. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes. Motion carries.
And thank you for your continued support.
Very welcome, chief. That concludes regular business this evening. Next up is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda this evening for further discussion? Councilmember Abraham?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by councilmember Abraham, supported by councilmember Hoderick, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. All items on the consent agenda have been approved this evening. There are no memorandums and future council agenda items on the agenda, but I will remind everybody, as city attorney Bloom mentioned, to review those council rules of procedure so that we can make any suggested changes, and I assume emailing our any thoughts we have to you is a good idea.
Or Ms. Dixon, yes. Or Aileen.
Or Aileen, of course. Sorry, Ms. Dixon. And there are no council referrals this evening. We move on to reports. Does anybody have any comments on any of the reports this evening? All right. Council comments. Councilmember Hamilton?
First, wanted to congratulate you, Mayor Baker and councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, on destroying me at the 5K yesterday. I did have a better time, though, than at the Nature Center 5K, so I'm proud of that. And of course, Rebecca, just demolished both me and the mayor. Congrats to that. First in her age class and everything. But thanks to the city staff and all the sponsors for the Frightful 5K. It was an amazing event. Victoria got to run the 1K, and she had a blast. Today's the last council meeting of my term, and so, you know, I don't know if I'll be on this council in a couple of weeks, and I just wanted to wholeheartedly say it's been an honor to serve with you, Mayor, and every member of council here, Mark, Lori, and all the staff, and whatever happens, I'm grateful to have been a part of this.
All right, thank you, councilmember Hamilton. Of course. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mayor, you said it so well after the, after the Frightful 5K, just really thanking our police, our fire, the ambulances, of course, the recreation department that ran the whole Frightful 5K, Cindy Stewart, community fairs, all of you councilmembers who were there. I mean, that was just the beauty of our city, seeing everyone out there working together. For myself, I had this special moment. It was my first time doing it, because I was waiting for my family, my son, to get old enough, and we did the 1K together, but then I did the 5K to start. And just this special moment of just running down Big Beaver, running down by, you know, by our police, running next to the big DPW trucks, which my son loved, and waving to them, and just, it was amazing. And then when you ran around the community center, those grassy knolls, and by the City Hall, something about it being kind of, this is, you know, as councilmember Hamilton said, it's our, you know, it's our last week, and my last week of my, last weeks of my, my partial term that I've served, and it just, something hit me. It hit me just, the deep, deep honor it has been to serve this city, and just to work with all of you, just, oh, Mark, Lori, like you're, Bob, Aileen, all of you, just, it is just amazing. I cannot, I cannot thank you enough. I feel like we've, we've had some war times together, we've had great times together, and it's, it's really been special. And of course, my fellow councilmembers, I admire each and every one of you beyond words. I just can't even say the words that I have for each of you, and kind of what you mean to me, and the way you've helped me through COVID. I mean, this has helped me in many ways. This has given me community through COVID, and just a real, yeah, a real purpose and all of that. And then, just to the residents, because this is all about the residents. And I think the joy of this period of time, too, is that we're just, we're talking a lot with residents, and I've been grateful to those who have felt comfortable to come out of their doors, as I've been knocking doors and making lots of phone calls tonight, talked to a woman for a good 20, 30 minutes about the city, and kind of just, you know, what she's thinking about the city and its future. And I still say to everyone, our future is so bright in Troy. It is bright. We're in a great place, thanks to our amazing city management and fellow councilmembers. And I do believe it's time to create tomorrow together. So again, just thank you all, thank you to the residents for the deep honor to serve this city.
Thank you, councilmember Chamberlain Kranga. Mayor Protem Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. Number one, I just wanted to remind everyone, I said it to, I think, council meetings before, but about the Nature Center Uncorked, which is the largest fundraiser of the year for the Nature Center. It will take place at the Troy Community Center on Friday, November 5th, at 6:00 PM. You can get your tickets online. I would encourage everyone to try to get them before October 29th, because the prices will go up after that if you wait to get them at the door. But don't let that hold you back. Still come and support either way. So please, please, please come and support the Nature Center, because they are a true gem in this city. The other thing is, is that this is my last meeting as Mayor Protem. And so it was an honor to serve as Mayor Protem for this past year, but I am also so equally happy and honored to pass the baton on to councilmember Erickson Galt, who will be taking over as of the next meeting. So I'm very happy to have served, and I'm very happy that councilmember, I keep saying, wanted to say Ann, but councilmember Erickson Galt will be taking over, and she will do an excellent job serving everybody, so, thank you.
We have to vote on that, just so we're clear.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to vote no, so.
Maybe I need to lobby the mayor.
We'll see. The hardest thing is changing the name of the title of who you're going to, when you switch to Mayor Protem. That's a tough thing, but.
I know, because you keep the same.
You do. Are you finished?
I am done.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brooks.
Thanks.
Additional council comments? Councilmember Hoderick?
Mine's going to sound maybe boring to people who don't geek out on municipal kind of stuff, but I'm here on my last day of an eight, my eighth year on council, my second term, and had the honor to participate again today in the joint local development finance authority meeting, which is a mouthful, but, you know, just the cornerstone of that is a gem that we have in Troy that maybe sometimes people don't even realize is here, and that is Automation Alley, and the work that goes on there, and the forward thinking that goes on there. And I was struck today, as I sat in the meeting, that many, many years ago, when I was at a, working at a corporation here in Troy, the then-county executive, Brooks Patterson, sent this gentleman named Ken Rogers to meet with us, looking for financial support to start up the idea, the very idea of Automation Alley. And I can remember sitting in that meeting, taking, taking that information in. We had meetings in the corporation about the business case for whether to participate, and we did. And all these many years later, to be sitting here today and hearing, you know, Ken Rogers, since retired and passed away, Tom Kelly, who talked about how hard it is to fill his shoes, and listening to his very aspirational and yet very pragmatic and relevant update ideas in terms of our manufacturing capability in the area, and Troy and Automation Alley will have a footprint as a world hub for that, is the bottom line of the discussion. And we have long been a forward-looking city and been part of that type of thinking and work, and we still are. And I really value living here and seeing that, and it was very inspirational today to be a part of that. There will be some reports, I believe, in the next agenda for all of council, but I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to say, that's just one of, like, a bazillion positive experiences that I've had. And I do really appreciate this, these councilmembers here, the city staff, all the learnings we've had. It's been a roller coaster ride. I won't, yeah, I'm not going to say it hasn't. From the moment I became involved as a citizen and then came here, it's been an honor and a privilege to, to serve, and I'm really proud of everything we've achieved, and look forward to the forward to the achievements to come. Whether I'm part of it or not, I have faith that that will happen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoderick. Losing track tonight. Here we go. Few things. Well, I'll start with this one, since none of the others mentioned it. We do have an election coming up next week. I guess I can say, it's safe for me to say it because I'm not on the ballot, but next week is Election Day, although many of you have already been voting via absentee ballot. But as a reminder, if you vote in person on Election Day, all of the polls in precinct locations will be open. Check-in will be consolidated if there's multiple precincts at your place, but it's going to look the same as it always has. And it's a, it's a fairly simple ballot here in Troy, so it won't take you too long. I know City Clerk Dixon that we had a drive-through event this past weekend. Would it be possible for you just to give a word or two on how that went?
Sure. So, it was a little bit rainy, but, so the turnout was light, but there were residents that showed up and needed some help, and we were able to assist them in person, and I know they appreciated that. We answered a lot of questions, issued a few ballots, and just generally was there for people when they couldn't make it during the weekday, so I know they appreciated that. And we will also be open this Saturday from 8:00 to 4:00, and that's going to be regular business hours up in our office. It won't be a drive-through. It'll be walk into City Hall and come up to see us.
Very good. Thank you. And I appreciate, I know, I'm sure we all do, the extra, the drive-through day and the work you're doing for all of that to help our residents vote. I've had a really busy week here in the city, and I don't often talk about all that stuff. And if you follow me on social media, I'm posting a lot about the businesses that are opening, the events I've been going to. But I did want to make note of an event that the Troy Chamber had on Friday morning, which was the Your City, Your County, Your State, and You event. And the reason I bring it up is because if you, you weren't there, there is a link for it on YouTube. It's about an hour long, but it was a, it was a panel discussion moderated by Christie McDonald from TBS here, who's also a Troy resident. And the panel was County Executive Dave Coulter, Ryan Michael from the MEDC, and me. And I thought it was a good discussion of some of the issues facing our city, county, and state, but how we all play a role in working together to do what's best for the residents we serve. So, that is on the city's YouTube page. It's also on the CMN TV site as well. But if you are interested, please check that out. Frightful 5K, we talk an awful lot about a race, but it's funny how it's the first thing we often lead with the council comments. Please don't think we're crazy. That'll stop for about 10 and a half more months. But I, Rebecca kind of started with it, and I did, I, Sunday morning early, it's freezing cold out there, and I got there at 7:45, but I know city staff and the police department and the DPW, Cindy Stewart, they, they were all there way earlier in way darker light and way colder temperatures, and they, that doesn't even talk about the work they did, recreation department also. That doesn't even talk about the work they did leading up to the event. I know it, it seems trivial sometimes when we're up here essentially, you know, giddy about a run, but it is a lot about what Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga said about the ability to be a part of our community, to run through some of our Civic Center assets or near them and around them, and to see our city from a different point of view in the middle of Big Beaver on foot, for example. And I know we had record registration this time, and I participated in all of the Frightful 5Ks going back to 2016, and my time is not as fast as it was in 2016, I learned, but it was faster than two years ago. So, there, now I can sound like one of the silly people talking about our race, but it's, it's a good experience to see a good representation of our community, different ages, different cultural backgrounds, different heritages, different costumes, I mean, different everything, and they're all there for one common purpose, to come together as a community and to share in this family-friendly, fun event. So, I, I do really appreciate it, and I know how much goes into it from a city resource level and the staff that doesn't get to have the fun and talk about it and take all the pictures and post them on social media, but instead stand out there in the cold, block a street while someone's trying to turn onto Big Beaver, and they don't understand why they can't. I know there's a lot, a lot of nitty-gritty stuff that goes into it. So, I really do thank all of the city who worked so hard to make that a good event for our community. And of course, Rebecca was first in her age group, but 14th overall, which is actually really impressive. So, congratulations on that. We talked a lot tonight. There's been a lot coming before us. I imagine it will continue, especially as we come out of COVID, as we keep trying to come out of it. But I do believe there's a lot to be done in this city and this next council term, starting in two weeks, two weeks? I think that's about right. We've got a lot to work on. So, I look forward to that organizational meeting, and then the following Saturday, we have our strategy session where we'll have a really focused look at what we need to be working on in this city based on resident feedback from surveys, conversations with residents, things that have come to us. But it's going to be, going to be good. Looking forward to it and know that we'll work hard on the city's behalf. That concludes council comments this evening. There's no closed session, so we are adjourned.